Perfect. All right. Hello, everybody. The time is 7:00 PM on October 24th. I'll call to order this meeting of the Bridgewater Town Council. The meeting is being aired live and recorded for future broadcasts. I'd ask that everyone join me for a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The council has not been made aware of the passing of any military veterans, but I would ask that you please join us for a moment of silence to honor all those veterans who have passed. Thank you. All right, the first item of business is item A, the approval of the meeting minutes from October 10th, 2023.
Motion approved.
Second, we have a motion, a second, any discussion? Seeing none, we can go to a voice vote. All those in favor approving say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Motion passes. The next item, item B, announcements from the president. Just one quick announcement, some of you may have seen an email about cybersecurity training. Just a reminder to the council members, if you have not completed that, please try to do that by the end of this week. That is my only announcement. Item C, proclamations. We do have a proclamation this evening. We have a proclamation for the fire chief. And if I can, I'd like to read that. Whereas Michael P. McDermott is retiring as fire chief of the town of Bridgewater after a successful career in municipal service. And whereas in 1988, Chief McDermott joined the town of Bridgewater Fire Department and during his tenure moved up in the ranks, starting with firefighter EMT. And whereas in 2007, Chief McDermott was promoted to acting lieutenant, and then in 2008 to lieutenant. And whereas in 2017, he was promoted to captain and then deputy chief. And whereas in 2021, Chief McDermott was promoted to fire chief. And whereas Chief McDermott has specialized training in advanced fire investigation, arson investigation certified, ATV safety course, fire chief officer school, dive team training, fire officer supervisory training, fire prevention officer one and two, fire inspection one, incident command system. And whereas during his tenure, Chief McDermott also participated in many programs such as the annual bike safety program, the annual senior safety day, muscular dystrophy drive, operation lifesaver instruction, Operation Santa, Bridgewater Youth Football Board of Directors and Coach for over 10 years, delivery of meals on wheels for over 10 years. And whereas Chief McDermott has diligently worked to improve the quality of life for his fellow fire staff and residents. And whereas upon his retirement, Chief McDermott will be missed by his colleagues and the town of Bridgewater, but can now enjoy his retirement. Resolved that the Bridgewater Town Council hereby extends their congratulations to Chief Michael P. McDermott for his dedication and service to the town of Bridgewater. Thank you, Chief McDermott. Okay. I would also like to extend the thanks of the council. You know, we certainly appreciate all of the work that Chief McDermott put in. He was a known presence in the town and his efforts are greatly appreciated. Moving on to item D, citizen open forum. This is the part where we welcome open comment from the community. We ask that if you do wish to make a comment, you approach the podium, give us your address. And we do ask that you try to keep the statements to three minutes. You'll see me start to sort of give you the signal as we approach three minutes. I would ask that you respect that. Would anyone from the public wish to speak? Sure, please.
Excuse me. Good evening, Carlton Hunt, Austin Street, Chair of the Energy Committee. I'm here tonight to support Order FY24014. Knowledge of the submission was first learned from a communication with the Green Communities Regional Coordinator. When asked in July, the town manager indicated he did not know about the submission. He seemed surprised. His promise to send the grant scope hasn't happened. Therefore, I couldn't hold any meetings with the Energy Committee to discuss the grant. As your Energy Committee Chair, I spend hours maintaining the Green Communities Municipal Energy Initiative database for the town. It saddens me, the Energy Committee had no input on this grant. As often happens, the committee with expertise and volunteer resources was ignored. If you care, we can engage in a conversation. Section 14 of Article 2, Town Council Rules and Procedures of the Administrative Code, the section is titled Citizens' Comments, says, quote, "Anyone may comment at this time for up to three minutes. Comments and/or inquiries should be made in a respectful manner and not cause, cast dispersion on individual council members or the council as a whole," unquote. Then further states, quote, "All inquiries should be responded to if the information is available at the time." Or a public response should be forthcoming at a future meeting of the town council. Responses shall be limited to the question at hand and are limited to three minutes. Nowhere does the code say the council cannot respond to a question asked by the public during a meeting. The Admin Code instruction requiring a response at a future meeting is rarely, in fact, followed. My question to the council tonight is, why was the Energy Committee not engaged in supporting the application? The second question. Are you interested, as requested by the Energy Committee's April 23rd letter, resubmitted to you on October 3rd, 2023, to consider the specialized code put forward in Mass. General Law 225 CMR 22.00 and 23.00, updated September 22, 22? Recall, this opt-in code is required by statute to help achieve a net zero Massachusetts economy in 2020-50. Fundamentally, it upgrades billing codes such that all compliance pathways are designed to ensure that new construction is consistent with these goals through a combination of energy efficiency that enables reduced heating and loads and efficient electrification. Use of fossil fuels such as gas and propane or biomass is permitted, but comes with additional requirements for onsite solar generation and pre-wiring for future electrification of any fossil fuel-using equipment.
We are approaching three minutes.
Per the requirements of this code, there are only nine weeks left for the council to act. It's an important opportunity to address the goals that we talked about. As our letter states, the state's Green Communities has made available to the regional coordinator and other specialists to support the council's considerations. I take you, I'll take your answer now during the council comments or by your action to take up this critical zoning. Again, are you willing to act on this important matter? Thank you for listening and responding.
Okay. Thank you. I think what we can do by way of action is ask the town manager to cover this on his next town manager report. And then after the meeting, I can follow up directly with the response. Would anyone else from the public wish to comment? Okay, seeing none, I will close the citizen open forum. Moving on to item E, appointments, we have none. Item F, hearings, we have two this evening. The first one, I will open the public hearing, the time is 7:09 PM. I'll open the hearing for Order OFY24010, loan authorization, water well number five A replacement. As a reminder, budget and finance voted three to zero to recommend at their 10-10-23 meeting. The Finance Committee voted six to zero to recommend at their 10-2-23 meeting. This order has been advertised in the 10-13-23 edition of the Brockton Enterprise. We'll start by asking if there are any general questions from the public. Seeing none, we'll move on and ask, does anyone from the public wish to speak in favor? Seeing none, we'll move on. Does anyone from the public wish to speak in opposition? Seeing none, are there any questions from the town councilors on this? Okay, I do know we had discussion in prior meetings. I do not see any additional discussion. So in that case, the time is 7:10 PM. I will now close the hearing for Order OFY24010. And I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, we can go ahead and move to a voice vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. The motion passes. We'll now move on to agenda item FB. I'll now open the public hearing for Order OFY24011, loan authorization, water well number nine replacement. The budget and finance voted three to zero to recommend at their 10-10-23 meeting. Finance Committee voted six to zero to recommend at their 10-2-23 meeting. And the order has been advertised in the 10-13-23 enterprise. At this point, I would ask if there are any general questions from the public. Seeing none, we can move on. Does anyone from the public wish to speak in favor? Seeing none, we'll move on. Does anyone from the public wish to speak in opposition? Seeing none, we'll move on. Are there any questions from the town councilors? They're seeing none. I'll move ahead. The time is 7:11. I will now close the hearing for Order OFY24011. And I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? We can move to a voice vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. The motion passes. That completes item F on the agenda. We'll move forward to item G, license transactions. We do have one license transaction tonight. We have petition P 2024-002, the granting of an on-premise restaurant all-alcoholic beverages license. We will now open the public hearing for petition P 2024002. And the time is 7:12 PM. If the petitioner is present, I'd like to make a brief presentation. We would welcome you to approach, not necessary, but if you'd like to.
Hi, my name's Christine Babardi. I'm the president of Casa Agave. It's going to be a Mexican-themed restaurant. We're also part owners in the building itself, so we have a vested interest in this. My son and daughter are going to be working with us in the restaurant. They both have restaurant experience. They're young adults, so they're, you know, we're going to try to, you know, differentiate ourselves from the previous, the previous establishment that was there. You know, we're going to be very vigilant with, you know, IDs and training our employees. But first and foremost, it's a restaurant. It's not going to be a barroom or college hangout. I know that's, you know, a lot of people have questions about that. Yeah, we've got a great chef that's coming onboard from Boston. He has a sous chef coming. So we're looking forward to it.
Great, thanks. Thank you very much. A little bit of feedback. I try to fix the feedback before we move ahead with the discussion. Okay. Yep, do we have any questions for the petitioner, Counselor Gallagher?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple of questions. When do you anticipate you will start, you will open, your timeframe?
That's the question of the past four years.
Yeah.
Um, we're almost there. We've got the inside. We're waiting on the electrical final inspection and the plumbing. We've got the inside is pretty much, the finish is pretty much done. The equipment's there. Chef's ready to go. The walls are painted. The HVAC is finished, floors. So we're just waiting to, on the finished inspections for the plumbing and the electrical right now. We're anticipating next month, which I think that's a little, you know, jumping the gun, but we, you know, want to get it open as soon as possible. We've been working on this for three and a half years.
Yeah, a lot of people have been following the construction over there. So the name will be Casa.
Casa Agave.
Agave.
Agave, so Mexican cuisine.
Thank you. Very good. Well, good luck.
Thank you.
Do we have any other questions for the petitioner?
Actually, I don't have enough for the petitioner.
Yeah.
Okay. Nothing. Okay. Thank you very much.
Just a quick question to the town manager, the town attorney. Just for clarity, on the application, it says retail alcohol beverage license. Does that, this is not a retail license, so is that an issue on the application?
If you're voting the voting the petition as all alcohol beverage license, on-premises restaurant alcohol.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Hi, Counselor Robinson.
I just have a technical question about the petition. The first word is Casa is spelled wrong.
Ace.
So I would, do we need to amend that?
I think we can correct that as a scrivener's error.
Yeah.
Thank you. All right, moving ahead with the public hearing. Are there any general questions from the public? Seeing none, does anyone from the public wish to speak in favor? Seeing none, does anyone from the public wish to speak in opposition? Seeing none, are there any additional questions from the town councilors? Okay. Seeing none. The time is 7:17. We can now officially close the hearing for petition P 2024-002. I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second, we have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Seeing none, we can move to a voice vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Passes, congratulations.
Good luck.
All right, moving on to item H, presentations. We do have one presentation this evening. It's the fire station presentation update.
So, Mr. President, while Brian and Joe and Connor are setting up, I'll just introduce them. Brian Humes was engaged early on in the fire station process to do a feasibility study and completed that study quite successfully. It identified the proposed location of the fire station and, and some of the, the square footages, rough square footages required to maintain and keep our equipment. So since then, Brian has designed a full-service fire station, fire headquarters. And so what I've asked him to do tonight is just walk you through the planning process and what, what we have for a fire station, what we have planned for a fire station, and, and give you sort of a broad outline of, of how, where we've come, how we've got there. So that is, with that, I'll turn it over to Brian until he wants to know how to.
Well, I'm going to share my screen.
And maybe just a quick logistics question. Do you want us to hold questions until the end of the presentation? Or are you looking for an interactive discussion?
I think it would be, uh, thank you. I think it would be helpful if I can just run through some slides at first and then we'll be available to answer any and all questions.
We'll hold questions until the end.
Oh, thank you and good evening. It's nice to be with you in person. We did make a presentation to this same council in December of 2021. At that time, we were remote. We had to do it electronically. Some of you might not have been here in December of 2021. So I wanted to do two things tonight. I wanted to give you an update as to when we have been initiated for this project and the process that we went through. Just refresh the December 2021 presentation and then tell you what's happened from 2021 on. As the town manager mentioned, I'm Brian Humes, representing Jankunsky-Humes Architects. It's been a great experience since we were initiated for this project to go through the existing building. And it was really evident why we were brought onboard. The existing facility is outdated. It's in need of a lot of improvements. And one of the reasons we were brought onboard is because I have designed, planned, and seen in construction over 90 public safety facilities throughout New England. I've been doing this public safety design for over 30 years. And so I'm bringing to the town that experience with doing this type of construction, this type of planning and design. I'm giving that experience to the town while in return, the Bridgewater Fire Department has been very helpful and very engaged in this process as to what their needs were. And we were hired in February of 2020. So looking back, yeah, it's, it's not a new project. It's not a new project for the town. It's not a new project for us. We've been working on this project since July of 2020. And that's when we were brought onboard to start the process of a feasibility study. And the feasibility study was just the first step in trying to identify what the specific needs of the facility were. We did a needs assessment and we did a site assessment. What this did was we gathered information from the fire department and wanted to design for the needs and not just the wants. We wanted to boil this down to what's needed. It's a purpose-built and purpose-designed facility. So with that, we wanted to note specifically, not just the general description of the room, but all the particulars of each space. They were identified in a very detailed needs assessment. We then applied that needs assessment to three sites throughout town. We looked at 1185 Pleasant Street, Zero Crescent Street, and 106 Hale Street. And based on that site assessment, those sites were given to us for review. There were certain particulars as to why the town wanted us to investigate those three specific locations. And looking at the three locations, it was clear to me, and I would think it was clear to the department, that the 1185 Pleasant Street was the preferred site. It was town-owned. It was in the western district of the town where the fire department was feeling they needed greater presence in Bridgewater. So it checked the box there. The site was large enough, although it does have some wetland restrictions within it. We felt there was enough land there for developing a headquarters facility that would suit the needs that were stated in the needs assessment. Based on that selection from three to the one selected Pleasant Street site, we then engaged in site planning, floor plans, exterior elevations, and renderings. This was the early rendering that we did of the proposed site plan. This was part of our feasibility study. Pleasant Street is to the bottom of the site. We have an entrance drive. You see some red lines on that site plan. Those red lines indicate areas of wetland. So coming off of Pleasant Street, there's an area of wetland to get into the site. There's an area to be developed to the right-hand side, which is not wetland soils. And we found that that was adequate to handle parking, the main headquarters building, and then we're also proposing a storage outbuilding to the rear. That's the, the yellow-colored box to the top. There is a pathway, you see, to the top of the page. Part of the site evaluation here revealed that this was also to be utilized for some passive recreation. And that passive recreation component is still part of the concept of the site and can be accommodated within the site. The floor plans were developed to a schematic level. This is the main floor. We have four bays, being drive-through bays. To the, to the right of those bays is the main administrative and public areas of the building. We have a second floor, and the second floor is just to the right. In addition to program space on the second floor, at the lower part of the plan, is a big open space. That big open space is your future expansion potential within the facility. So we're building this facility for today and tomorrow, and tomorrow's tomorrow. We have built into this plan future expansion if the need arises for additional program space. So the building does not have to be expanded horizontally. The building can accommodate future expansion within the footprint that we're building. The outbuilding was for storage and for additional parking for fleet equipment and fleet vehicles. And this was the rendering that was proposed at the feasibility stage. We looked at materials that felt to be in keeping with Bridgewater. While we took input from the town, we took input from the fire department. At the time of the feasibility study, a total budget of $23 million was established. And that anticipated some cost escalation, but that also anticipated a construction start of fall 2022. Just note that within the slide, because that will come back for future discussions. The design duration was six to eight months. The bidding duration was a month and a half. Construction duration was 18 months. All of those things that were stated in the feasibility study are still accurate, still true. And what that would result in was a fire headquarters that meets and exceeds accreditation standards, building code standards, energy code standards, OSHA standards, ADA and Mass. Architectural Access Board accessibility standards. We have to design this according to code standards for an accessible facility. This facility needs to withstand natural disasters. This is a facility that needs to continue to function for the town through all sorts of natural disasters, being wind, snow, seismic. So the code requires us to build this facility to withstand some greater load criteria than just your normal code standards. It meets all zoning regulations, and it promotes a safe working condition. And as I mentioned earlier, it was designed for future expansion. So a lot of those things that I state in this slide, your current facility fails miserably. And that's one of the reasons why we are looking to undertake this project for the town, because a lot of those codes and standards are not being met in your current facility. In addition to NFPA standards, that's not even mentioned here, which is very deficient in your current facility. So in December 2021, this was the last slide that I had shown you. In 2021, the current project status was only schematic design, and we still required a lot of things to do to get this to a point where we could get it prepared for bidding. And all of those things are now in my update, so since 2021. We have been busy, along with the owner's project manager that's here with me. The project was funded through the voters. The town did engage the OPM services. They engaged the design team. We further had to define the wetlands and the conditions of the wetlands to further develop the site. We did meet with the Energy Committee. And we had good conversations to make this building not only functional and operational, but very energy-efficient. And I think that would have payback for the committee, for the town, for many years to come. We did have initial discussions with the Conservation Commission and the Planning Board. The OPM did perform several professional cost estimates along the way of project development. And they undertook a pre-qualification process where we had to pre-qualify potential and interested bidders. And that list has been narrowed down to over 100 bidders that are now on a list of pre-qualified contractors that meet the criteria of financial-based, experience-based, Decamp-certified bidders that are interested in bidding your project. And we prepared all the documents for a competitive bidding process. We are bidding this through Mass. General Law Chapter 149 process. So we will be taking bids for both filed sub-bidders and general bidders. This is the, just a snapshot of what the site plan looks like now that we are going out to bid. It looks extremely similar to the one that you saw in 2021. The concept held. The concept is still the concept. The concept held. The concept is still the concept. We were able to develop the site, level the the platform to build the buildings, create a crossing over the wetland entrance, and navigate around buffer zones and areas of wetland soils. So what we had anticipated actually came true. If you look at the site plan, it's a whole lot harder to read. It's not intended for you to read this, but in concept, it's the same building that we proposed back in two thousand and twenty-one. It just has a lot more information on it. You still have the four drive-through bays. You still have the public and administrative on the right. We do have a training tower, which is incorporated in the lower left for purposes of fire training. Exterior elevations, while they're not as glamorous as the rendering, they're there for bidding purposes, and it looks very, very similar to what you had seen in the earlier rendering. So the concept is still the concept. The building is still the building. With with the time that we've had, we've developed a hundred and fifty-nine drawings to describe all the aspects of the construction for potential bidders. We have two volumes of technical specifications and boilerplate. Volume one is eight hundred and fifty-four pages long. Volume two is another eight hundred and forty-two pages long. The more information we could put out there, we feel the better the bids are going to be at bid time. But we still understand that contractors want more and more and more information. So we're available throughout the bid to answer questions, as long along with the OPM, to answer questions. The current project status is you, this project is currently out for competitive bidding. The drawings were dated October eleventh. It went out for public invitation for bid. The filed subbids are due November eighth. The general trade bids are due on November twenty-first, so right before Thanksgiving. That's the current dates that we have for bidding. Those bid dates may change if bidders need more time, but those are the dates we've established to date. Also, the project status is we, as a design team, need to still apply for and seek our local approvals. Planning, conservation, that's not forgotten in the process. But we wanted to also take advantage of what we saw as a very robust and active bidding period right now that doesn't push this project into holiday bidding, where contractors may not be really focused on putting together the right number for you over holiday seasons. So we did this deliberately, not to shirk our responsibilities, but we do have to seek local approvals and and then engage the local committees to get those approvals. And the contractors have to hold their bids for up to sixty days. So if the schedule holds of November twenty-first, the town would have sixty days to act on any bids that are received. So as still required, yes, local approvals. Review and acceptance of bids, once they're received. The town would then offer a notice of intent and a contract signing would be established. And we are still anticipating an eighteen-month construction duration to get the project completed to substantial completion, which means that's ready for your occupancy. That's a quick summary of the process. There's been tens of thousands of decisions that have been made throughout this whole ordeal. Again, I want to thank the fire department for their involvement in that process. They have always been there. We have gotten detailed descriptions all the way down to colors and finishes and carpets and flooring and colors. And this is two boards that I have down here are just a sample of the finishes that the department has been assisting our interior design staff with throughout the facility. So you get a feel for the the tones and the colors of the building. So the thousands and thousands of decisions that have been made, I think, have all been done in your best interest to keep this really where I started this presentation, down to the needs. I I have a lot of experience doing this, and I can tell you with certainty that the facility is still representing needs, and I don't think it's a lot of wants in this project. I think it's really gonna address what was originally requested from the fire department and and really satisfy what their goals and objectives are as a department to serve the town. So now I can open it up, and you have questions either for the architect, for the OPM. It will be, we'll be happy to handle anything they have, or Joe, I don't know if you had just say anything else.
No, just we've had the pleasure of being involved with the Mitchell School. We were the OPM on that project too, and that was a very successful project. We're actually excited to be part of the Bridgewater Fire Department. I locally grew up in Rainham, so I attended Bridgewater Rainham, so it's, it means a lot to me to be involved with both projects. It's been an exciting project through the process, the fire department. I can't tell you how engaged they were. Much-needed facility. It's sad to hear the chief's retiring, but I'm sure that good hands are gonna be following his his retirement. And we've gone through a really detailed, I've been involved with a number of projects with Brian, and he's a very detailed architect. And we plan to bring this project not only on time, but on the budget, as long as the budgets bids come in appropriately, that's all.
Great. Thank you very much. Thank you for the presentation. We appreciate it. I'll turn it over to the council. Does anybody, yep, starting with Councilor George?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you very much. So when did the original RFP go up?
Well, the original RFP for, you had several of them, original RFP for design services. I think it was my first slide. February of two thousand and twenty, there was a request for qualifications. February of two thousand and twenty. And that was a request for qualifications for a fire station feasibility feasibility study and design services for the town of Bridgewater.
Okay, and then you're looking at a November twenty-first deadline roughly for?
November twenty twenty-three.
November twenty-four, twenty twenty-three?
Yes.
Correct.
Right. So you were alluding to maybe elongating it. I would say from my perspective, it's been out there long enough. I I think the last report we had, there were, there was a robust amount of bidders coming in. We waited a long time. Some of it's been out of our control. But I think at this particular point, unless I would say you could guarantee us a better return on that time, we need to get this thing done. And I would hope that at the twenty-first, we would be moving forward to pick our bidders and get them going, because I think we we've waited long enough, and that's just my personal opinion.
Thank you, Councilor George. I think Counsel Robinson and then.
First, thank you for the presentation. I know this community is really excited about this project, so I wish you all the best through it. I have two questions. It's actually not for this group, but probably for Mr. Dutton and Attorney Rollins. My first question is, are we incurring fines for not being compliant in our current building?
No, no.
We've been able to grandfather issues.
There's so, so when you have a building that met code back in nineteen seventy-three, four in that neighborhood, just because the code changes doesn't mean that you become noncompliant. So if we were to put a certain threshold amount of effort into the existing fire station, then yes, we would be required to to meet code, but but right now, we're not required to meet meet the code, so there are no, no fines or anything associated with that.
Great, thank you. And then, as always, I think this was a big effort to engage the community, and and there was a lot of awareness around it. So I was wondering, are there any points, one, where we can be helpful in terms of, you know, where will there be points of communication to think about? And we don't have to answer that right now, but just to keep that in consideration. And then also, do we anticipate any points during this project where there might be public hearings? I'm just curious. I'm not sure how this process works.
I think at this point, so we've had a a pretty robust planning process, as Brian's pointed out, that's included comments from the fire department. It's included comments from fire, fire station building committee. And then we went to the voters, and once the voters vote to dead, in this case, dead exclude the funding, appropriate the funding. Well, you appropriate the funding, but then the the town votes to dead exclude it. Once that's happened, then then the project really moves from, you know, planning and 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 so forth into the execution phase. And so we're really in the execution phase. If, you know, I'm not, certainly not anticipating bids coming in, you know, wildly beyond what we've appropriated. But if they did, then we would have to retrench and and make decisions about how to move forward. And that would include, that would involve the council, you know, finance committee and and so forth, so.
Gotcha.
We're not, so so my hope is we don't involve the council.
All right. Thank you very much.
Counsel McKinnon?
Hey, guys. First, I just want to echo what Counsel George said over there. I mean, a hundred bidders. We got a nice plan up there, and we know what we're having for carpet, flooring, and all that. Shouldn't really go past November twenty-first. I really think they should get off the ground and start going, especially when it's gonna be an eighteen-month construction. I mean, look at the world. It's in a rough place, and it keeps getting worse. All that prices are probably gonna go back up like they did when the Ukraine one started, so I'm not saying hopefully it all ends tomorrow. You never know, but I do see that becoming a problem with the prices.
Yeah, to that, just to that point, we've seen a tremendous amount of volatility volatility in the market. A lot of that volatility was two thousand and twenty-one and two thousand and twenty-two.
No, I do construction too.
We're seeing it starting to stabilize, actually.
It is going down, but like I said, with where the world's at, you never know. Could happen overnight.
Yeah, I think this bid period right now is is in your favor.
Yeah.
Because it is as stable, and I know that contractors are interested in filling up their workload for two thousand and twenty-four. And that's why this is also a good period for them to do that. Construction, if bids are due November twenty-first, construction would probably be starting in early two thousand and twenty-four. And then they have an eighteen-month period to build, and it's a good cycle.
Why haven't you guys gone through conservation and planning yet? Is there a process that I'm not aware of yet? I'm new. I've been here since January. I'm learning, but I'm just asking, because I know from just what I've been paying attention, both of those boards can be a process.
They are a process. We we have had contact with them. We've gone to Conservation Commission for two meetings. So they're not unaware of the project, and they have also added very valuable feedback to the design process. We are responsible for getting this project through both of the local boards and commissions, so that's our responsibility. Why it hasn't been done earlier is because we've been a little delayed on the site aspect of this project as far as getting information, the complexity of the wetlands, going through geotechnical engineering on the site. It took time to get information, and we really can't apply until all the engineering data has been established. So you can't go for an approval on preliminary drawings. We finally felt we reached the period of final drawings on October eleventh. So we had a decision point to say, well, let's now go to planning and zoning, go to Conservation Commission. You have to do one before the other, conservation first, planning second. Go through the process, get the approvals, and then put the project out to bid. Well, time, I think, is is not on your side with that scenario. So we we discussed this with the town, and we felt that this was the right bid period, not not to put off the required approvals, but we're gonna try to do those both at the same time to take advantage of getting bids now instead of putting this out to bid, which would have been late winter or early spring. And then you've you've kind of missed a cycle that we just talked about with contractors wanting to start.
Right, and just to echo on that, we have a process, an in-house process, right, with CHI. We've been tracking costs associated with it from twenty to twenty, late twenty-two. We were seeing almost two percent per month escalation. And the good news is shortly in January of twenty-three and into now, we've seen it level out. We're actually seeing escalation drop to one point two five, which is exceptional. The the beauty of what we tried to do, and it was a tough decision without hesitation. I mean, typically, we have zoning and planning already approval before we go out to bid. But what we what we saw was when we reached out and started doing the prequalification process, we saw a lot of gen, in the bidding market over the last six months, we've seen a lot of a lot more general contractors and subcontractors actually bidding the market. Before, from twenty-one to twenty-two, we we would have, we'd be lucky to get one HVAC contract for the bid project, because it was a fear factor back then, if you remember. We lost a lot of help. The the subcontractors knew it was eighteen months to bid the project. They knew they had forty guys at the time. When they go to actually win the bid, they have eighteen. Now they're paying time and a half to try to meet that escalation of eighteen months. So what we found is that companies started to really reel back and say, you know what? If I gotta pay time and a half or double time to get it done within that time, my numbers are all going up. And that's what we saw going through twenty-two. Now, what we've seen is a lot of the projects and and public construction has leveled out. A lot of the general contractors now are are eager to get into it. There's a lot of volatility in the, you know, in the world in general with everything that's going on. So a lot of contractors are trying to nail down, you know, the next two to three years worth of work, and they're they're really being competitive. When we reached out to the subcontractors and generals, they were really excited about this project. And fortunately, Brian does a good set of drawings. I can tell you that. And and I mean, just in details in it. I mean, it's not typically, there's not a lot of RFIs, and as he was speaking about earlier, an addendum that may have to push out the bid. Usually, that doesn't typically happen. The the only reason a bid would get pushed out right now is if generals needed more time to actually get numbers from some of their non-file subcontractors get pricing, but where we are right now in the market is critically important, because anyone that wins the bids right now, they're funding next year than the year after this project, so they're filling their palate a little bit. Anyone that doesn't win it, they start to scramble, and and it gets even more competitive, and you start to lose bidders as you move forward through the market into eight to February. So we we collectively, as a group, sat and said, let's get it out on the market. The approvals, we're confident that we're gonna be able to get through that process in a relatively quick manner. And effectively, during the start of construction, they'll be mobilizing and and basically, you know, stripping and grubbing the site while we're going through that approval process. So I think we're in good shape overall, but typically, we usually like to get the zoning and planning board approvals ahead of time.
We will give both boards all the time they need to make a decision on this project. They're not rushed by our schedule. We will give them every courtesy to make every comment and get every question they have answered. And we understand if there are any conditions they'd like to put on the project, we would have to incorporate incorporate that into the project scope. So all of the things that they still are in charge of overseeing, we're gonna still honor their their review.
I mean, I don't see you guys getting denied by any of them. I just know right now, all these projects going on around town, they can only have so many on each meeting and all that.
That's great.
I just, I I want to see it going. I want to see it up. The town needs it. We've needed it for a while. I've been for it. I mean, what was it, my second meeting? I'm here telling, why can't we get the HVAC, the roof supplies and all that before we even get bids, you know? So I'm I'm all for it, and just one more question. What was Zero Crescent Street? Was that the police station?
Zero Crescent Street was a, it's a town-owned parcel. It has a lot of land, but the only access is off Crescent Street, and it's the recreation playfields that are off Crescent Street, so it would have impacted playfields and playgrounds.
I was just wondering. I know about one oh six Hale Street, but not that one.
There's some ball fields in there too. That was the Crescent Street site.
All right. Thank you, and good luck with everything. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Counsel McKinnon. Dr. Perry?
I just a quick question. So again, the original number projected was about twenty-six million. Are we going to be in that neighborhood still, based on your projections?
Boy, that's.
You had a crystal wall? So I.
All I can say is the market's gonna give us that answer.
Yeah.
I do they, we we've been doing cost estimates. The OPM has been doing them along the way. We are projecting this to be over the hard costs that were projected originally. But the market's gonna be able to tell us how close we are to the target. When I first was here in two thousand and twenty-one presenting it, the construction start at that time was fall of twenty-two. So all the the data that we were giving you was anticipating a fall two thousand and twenty-two construction start. This will be a spring two thousand and twenty-four construction start, so, you know, time has a way of impacting costs, so we'll see.
Yeah, this foretrays. Yeah, this foretrays actually worries the most, obviously electrical HVAC, fire protection. And, uh, so those are the, you know, and the beauty is, um, we, we do a delivering and, uh, impact schedule on purchasing deliveries. So, part of like switch gears have been a major issue for every project as we're trying to, uh, get things up and running. So we've done and looked at packages and the three or equals to make sure that they're available. And a lot of those products were reaching out to manufacturers. Some of the products come from Mexico and we're talking with a lot of the, the supply houses and they're, they're shelf ready now where they weren't before. Switch gears are still tricky. We're working with electrical engineer, to look at the different components on that HVAC equipment is now more readily available. It wasn't back in twenty two. So, there were a lot of factors that drove costs at that point. We're hoping things start to settle out. Fire protection still and missed metals tend to be, all over the place right now. So we just, if we get enough bidders, we get more competitive.
I always say I'm the most nervous guy in the room on bid date.
Yeah.
I'm just.
Yeah, next to me, I get, I get a sick stomach.
Yeah.
Sure. Appreciate it, guys. Thank you. Great presentation.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Perry. Uh, Counsel Gallagher.
Um, yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Noah, you answered, um, my questions, your concerns, you know? Did, did we appropriate enough money for the biz to come in target? So we really won't know that for a while.
I think I'll be back to answer that sometime in the future.
We hope so, but. Favorably. We, we need to get this done regardless. So we'll have to, you know, deal with whatever the consequences are when, when that happens. But thank you for the presentation tonight.
Well, it has, I can reiterate that it really hasn't undergone scope creep. There's, that's the process that when you start with something and it just grows and grows and grows. This hasn't grown. It's been developed from its base concept. So the market's going to tell you what that base concept is going to cost you on November twenty first.
And the good news of, of what we're doing and working closely with Mr. Dutton is just identifying alternates basically. And if the bids, you know, do come in favorable, you know, we add the alternate in and we're just identifying those items so that, you know, we can, strategic, like, uh, strategy wise, make sure that we can accommodate the entire program as we move forward.
Yep. Counsel Lindy.
Excellent presentation. Thank you. I'm wondering if I could get a copy of it. Okay. And also, also, um, I think this is more for the town manager, but I know we don't have to follow. I mean, now we have to follow current code, but we grandfathered in. Does this have any effect ultimately when we build the station on, fire, like in insurance rates for homeowners and everything?
Um, actually that is a great question and my understanding is it, uh, it has a favorable, uh, impact on, on homeowners when you, when you build a new station or you provide additional fire surfaces, but I would, uh, defer to, to Joe, uh, on that one. He probably knows more than I do.
Yeah. And, and I can tell you, um, a lot of factors into that, but strategically response time actually affects a lot of that. And I think, you know, there was a lot of thought in, in with Brian's team in the fire department, that, that best location, the proximity of that. There, there's a couple of bubbles that they circle for responses. And I think it's favorable in the entire town of Bridgewater. So.
You're seeing some large commercial developments, residential developments on the western side. And that was one of the reasons why this, uh, headquarters shifted to the west a little bit, and it was because of those ratings.
Thank you.
Any additional questions? All right. I just have two quick ones. I think you covered the rest of them. The first is in the drawing, there's a, there's a part of the building that's reserved for expansion. And just a, two questions on that. One is that a finished part of the building where we could use, you know, we could use it for meetings and that sort of thing versus unfinished. And then the second thing is through the planning process, um, do you have a sense of when that expansion, that expansion might need to happen? You know, is it ten years down the line? We think we might need to use it or is it three years?
We have designed the facility for twenty year growth. And that means conceivably you would be in the building for twenty years without seeing the need for expansion. So this is long-term expansion needs of the, of the department.
Great. And is that finished space or unfinished?
Unfinished space.
Okay.
None of these finishes that you see here will be in that space.
Okay. So it's, it's.
It's raw space.
Raw space. Okay. Okay.
Yeah, any future development would, would need future build out of that space.
Okay.
How many square feet is it?
Of unfinished space.
Ooh. I, I don't have that number.
We can follow up on that one.
I can follow up with that.
And, and the other part of it is that I've done nineteen fire stations throughout the Commonwealth and what a lot of towns fail to do is look at, how, you know, emergency responders has, uh, transformed in their responsibilities. I mean, we went through, a pandemic that who would have thought? And the whole policy and procedures have changed around that. Even, you know, uh, attending, you know, emergency responses where there's overdoses, that's changed their department need. So, having built in that flexibility and having that foresight, it, it actually makes Bridgewater step one, step ahead of most fire departments because they built the next fifty years, most towns. But when by the time they get into the facility, they're already too big for that particular facility. Brian tried to look at, you know, the best interests of town of Bridgewater as we move forward.
Yeah. And it makes sense. I like the fact that we can pivot based on the services that we provide. Um, I was just trying to get a sense of how quickly that pivot needs to happen. And then the last question, very basic one in the drawing. Um, I've, I've seen sort of two versions of the drawing. One version has a bunch of trees between the road and the fire station. Another version looks like maybe it doesn't. I'm just curious, if you're driving by just kind of in the current vision, is it down a long driveway behind trees and you really wouldn't see the building from the road? Or is it, is it visible from the road?
You will have, we, we can't disturb the trees in the wetlands. So those trees have to stay. So yeah, we were going to have, we are just clearing an aisle for an entryway, but that's three lanes wide. Uh, two lanes are for public. We've created a third lane for emergency vehicle egress. So if there is public taking up the, uh, queuing to Pleasant Street, which could happen, the fire apparatus have a clear exit out to Pleasant Street without having to queue into the public. So it's three lanes wide, but you will have just an alley that, that's viewed down to the headquarters.
One of the things that we took into consideration too, and we had a lot of discussion about is just the proper signage. Let the public know that there's a fire station, for emergencies as well. So we, we're talking about how that signage is going to be placed and, and that'll go through the approval process. Obviously it's a planning zoning. Once we determine that was.
Great. Okay. Uh, we have one final question.
As you're talking about, you know, entrance and, and leaving there, are we, uh, looking at putting some sort of signal light there as well?
Not part of this project.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. If I could just ask one clarifying question, uh, Brian, if, I don't think you addressed it, but maybe you could talk a little bit about the multi-use, space, training space, meeting space, and, and how that can be used as sort of an emergency operations center in the future.
On the main floor, I mentioned the main floor for, for drive-through apparatus base. The area to the right on the floor plan is public space, and administrative space. The public space includes a training classroom. The training classroom could be utilized obviously for fire training purposes and, and EMT training. But it also is off the public lobby. So the public would have access to use that space to have public, events at the fire headquarters. If they want to open up training, which has a public component, either bring in, um, public for training or bring in public for other meeting purposes of the town. That large, uh, room also has a divider. So it could be broken down into two smaller meeting rooms. So you have some flexibility there, not just to have one room, one purpose. But it could be broken down into two rooms for two functions happening at the same time. And it's also equipped for supporting the emergency operation, emergency management of the town also. So it does have radio communications. It does have telephone data. And the power is supported both with a UPS for backup and an emergency generator for backup. So you do have those systems in place because as I said, this is, according to the building codes and, and requirements within the state, this is an essential facility. What you have according to the code is fire stations, police stations, um, hospitals. These are all labeled as essential facilities. So we are building this building with impact rated glazing in all your windows. Normal building would not require that. This building needs to withstand those, uh, forces. So we are, it has to be done. It's a code requirement. These are the needs of, of modern day fire facilities. So those are all built in. Uh, which impacts cost of construction, obviously, but it's not something we have the luxury or liberty of saying we're, we're going to remove from the scope. So that's why it serves well to be an emergency operations center, to have access for public to, to utilize, uh, and gain services of the fire department.
And gains flexibility. That's what it came down to with that space.
Great. Great. I think that's it. Thank you very much for the presentation. As others have mentioned, we're excited to see it move forward. If we can support that progress or acceleration anyway, let us know. Um, we'll keep an eye on it as it progresses. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, moving on to item I, the town manager's report. We have one update this evening on the High Street Bridge closure.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. I have, uh, the good news is I have very little to additional to report on the, uh, High Street, uh, bridge closure. The bridge, uh, for those that have seen it is, uh, is, uh, has a deck now and, uh, we are still shooting for a mid-November, uh, reopening date. We have not heard from the contractor or anything to the contrary. Uh, the only other, um, piece of information is that we are probably going to execute a change order, uh, which will allow us to move one of the newly placed poles and, uh, widen the entrance, uh, to the, uh, highway roadways, uh, department. So really that is, uh, that's all I have for High Street, uh, bridge closure, but happy to answer any questions about that.
Do we have any questions from the council? Okay. Saying none. Uh, thank you for the update. And as we mentioned in the next update, if we could get a, an update on the, uh, electrical, or the utility. Um, item J, discussions, uh, Counselor George will lead us in a discussion on proposed town manager review timeline.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. So, um, the review committee had a meeting. And the meeting was specifically around the timing, of, uh, the delivery of the town manager's annual review. To give you just a reminder of the last thing that I spoke about, um, the timing of the prior reviews were kind of built into the, the current, the, the former, uh, contract timing. Um, so Counsel Robson and I had a discussion in regards to putting it in front of the council for a proposal, to basically change. We don't have it in our admin code other than we have to deliver it, but, I think it's proper within our context to kind of agree on this. That, uh, the proposal would be that the review, would go out to the counselors, the review form on January thirtieth of each year. It would be due back from the counselors on February twenty eighth. And then the review would be delivered by the council president to the town manager on March thirty first. And that, you know, as long as the contract stayed with a June thirtieth, um, expiration, that timing, would stay consistent with the ninety day review, ninety day notice if, uh, the town manager's contract is not going to be renewed. So, um, I would like to propose that for the council, um, for consideration and, and adoption.
Do we have any questions or additional comments from counselors?
It's a good timeline. Yeah.
Yep. I would also agree. I, I think, um, in the past, one of the challenges we've had as new counselors might not have a lot of, experience or interaction with the town manager prior to giving the review. I think this gives, um, almost as much time as you can get before the next election cycle. So I, I think the timing is good. And having it for a month to think about and digest and fill out, I think is also good. Um, at one thirty to two twenty eight. So, um, while we're not voting on it, I, I think.
Oh, well, I think we have to get something written up.
I don't think we, yeah, but I think we cannot, we can offer opinions.
Yeah.
So through you to the town attorney. We don't have anything in our admin code that gives specific dates.
Yeah.
So do I, can I just propose this timeline without having to do a formal?
You can do it that way. You guys can propose it by way of ordinance. So it's something that stays in place. You, I mean, it can just be a policy. You all have to do it basically pursuant to the current contract, right? So I think you're fine doing it as just a policy of you all, um, just following the normal course.
Yeah. If that's, if, if, if the council wants a proposal, we'll do that. I mean, that's, that's fine. But I think, for the sake of ease, I think I can put the proposal out there for adoption without having to do a formal, a formal proposal.
Can we vote on something that isn't?
I don't think I would vote on it.
Okay.
I, I would just do it as the process, right?
Yeah.
It's a matter of there's a contract that's out there that requires certain things. You all just follow that. If there are things, that require a quorum of you, right? And then some sort of, uh, vote, then that's a different story. But this seems like a timeline, to follow the existing contract.
And Counsel George is in charge of the review process.
Yeah. So I, I think that's fine.
So what our goal now with the understanding that everyone's on the timeline is we have to produce a review, by January thirtieth that everyone accept, that everyone agrees to, so that on the thirtieth, every, every counselor gets the review and starts the process. So that gives us a little bit of time. I mean, that'll be coming up in front of all of you and we can land on it, but there are, a bunch of different moving parts to it and we'll do the best we can to get something that is very workable.
Okay. Uh, Dr. Perry?
Yeah. Um, so the only question I had is, so what is our timeline now of establishing the goals for the town manager? We were talking about beginning of fiscal year, uh, and some discussions before. Is this what we're looking at?
So that would be, on my understanding, that would be strategic planning. We're only responsible for delivering the review.
But it would be the same timeframe.
Would be the same timeline, but it would not. So it's two different processes, right? You got to give him his review.
Right.
And then after the view is completed, then you got to give him his goals and, or the, I should say, the town manager, goals and objectives.
Right.
So you're going to have us just working on the review. Strategic planning is the one who's going to be proposing the, the goals and objectives.
And I can, I can, I'm the chair of strategic planning, so I can, um, meet to try to align with that timeframe.
Weren't we originally talking about doing something though more along the lines with the beginning of the fiscal year? Or is this accomplish what we're looking to do better off with this timeline? Um, based on renewal dates for contracts and things of that nature.
It's a good question. Maybe I can introduce something from strategic planning for us to talk through the goals separately.
So, yeah, I, I mean, if you're looking from a fiscal perspective, I mean, the fiscal year starts July first.
Correct. No, I'm just, yeah, I got with the review process ahead of that. I, I, I agree. It's, that's good. But again, in reference to, set, you know, the initial setting up of goals and reviewing of the prior goals, um, just to get that whole timeline all the way set. So it makes, you know, sense timeline wise.
Perfect. So why don't I, um, through strategic planning, um, come up with a timeline proposal for that and then we can talk about it.
Did it shift because of, uh, the contract renewal?
Well, I mean, it, in essence, yes, it was, I mean, personally, it was very clunky.
Yeah.
To deliver a review in January. Um, both from new council perspective, the fiscal year is only, you know, two thirds of the way done. Um, you know, to give a review on specific goals and objectives on budget items that, we really don't have, you know, you, you're looking at a prior year budget and half of a prior year budget and then half of a current budget. It just didn't really make a lot of sense. So I think this aligns very well on both aspects. That, that, again, just my opinion on that.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. I mean, I was part of the discussion with you and I was aligned. I'm just trying to give an explanation to Counsel Perry.
Sure.
That was the reason.
Uh, Counsel Gallagher, did you have a comment?
Yeah, if I could, um, so, the council will get the review forms on January thirtieth to be returned on February twenty eighth. I guess my question is, is, I know there was some discussion in the past. The review would be solely counselor review of the town manager. There'll be no departmental or public input at all.
Nope. Okay. Nope. This is, I mean, this is the council's review. Okay.
Okay. Any additional comments?
Okay.
Um, I would maybe say indirectly, you know, as counselors, we can connect with, we, I think we probably should connect with, the public to help influence our own review. So that's, that's.
Let me clarify my statement. We're ultimately responsible for doing the review, but I would take input from anybody involved, that's going to help me with my review. We're not going to have, we're, we're not going to have maybe one or two people representing the public. Actually, do a review. That, that, I guess that's my point. We don't do it in a vacuum, but at the end of the day, the nine of us are responsible for, for doing the review and getting it in.
Great. Um, thank you for driving this, Counsel George. Do we have any additional questions? Okay. Any additional comments, Counsel George on this?
Uh, no, now we got to do the real work.
Right. All right. Um, thank you for the support on that. Uh, do we have any? All right. Um, thank you for the support on that. Uh, do we have any item, moving on to agenda item K, committee reports? Do we have any committee reports this evening? Okay, seeing none. We'll move on to legislation for action. Uh, the first item we have is item A, proposed ordinance D F Y 22008, Bridgewater Town Charter, Article Two Legislative Branch Annual Stipend. And I do have, uh, just some information to update on this one. So if you remember in our last meeting, uh, we did vote on, uh, some changed language to put in the charter, the actual amount that we're proposing for the town council. It's the amount of $5,000 for a council member and the town council president would earn 7,500. And then we added some additional language. Everyone has that language in front of them. Thank you to Counselor Chase. Um, we also, uh, said, uh, in the last meeting that we wanted to pause and get some advice from legal counsel. Uh, and we have received that and I want to share that back with the group. Everyone has this written in front of you, so I won't read the exact details. And again, thank you to Counselor Chase for pulling this together into a handout. Um, but, uh, what we ended up seeing is there, there actually is law at the state level that can inform our decision here. And a few items from that law, it's G L C 29, section 6A. Um, it says, notwithstanding the provision of any city charter to the contrary, the mayor and the members of the city council or the legislative. General Fund Free Cash Allocation Budget and Finance Meeting on 10/24, uh, voted.
Yes, we voted tonight to recommend, to recommend.
Wow. Three, voted, okay, voted three to zero to recommend. The finance committee voted six to zero to recommend at their 1016 meeting. Um, I will, uh, maybe defer to the town manager to introduce this, to describe this.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. This is, uh, as I explained to budget and finance or reminded budget and finance, this is your annual allocation of free cash, uh, certified free cash. We, we, uh, divide it up into five or six, uh, separate, uh, funds. Um, it comes in, I can tell you the amount of free cash. What, this year was $4,819, $4,819. So just over $4 million, um, and the division, um, for those that are listening, um, we put, uh, 500,000 into our stabilization fund, our traditional general fund stabilization fund. We're putting, uh, $2,464,000 into our capital stabilization, uh, trust fund. We are putting, uh, $100,000 into our O P E B stabilization trust fund, which is other post-employment benefits, uh, trust fund. We're putting 813,000 into our employee liability fund. That is essentially what, uh, funds sick buybacks for, uh, buyback provisions, uh, in old union contracts for, for those that are retiring. Uh, we are putting $100,000 into one-time and unforeseen expenses fund. And, uh, and then finally, uh, the opioid stabilization fund, which you created earlier this year. And, uh, this is a transfer of monies that we received, settlement monies that we received, um, into, uh, the general fund. Uh, this year and future years, that money will go directly to the opioid stabilization fund without, uh, going through the free cash process. So that is, uh, that is what is in front of you this evening.
Great. Uh, do we have any questions for the town manager on that? Uh, yeah, Counselor Gallagher?
If I could, Mr. President, to, um, add a little bit to what the town manager said, um, we did, the, the budget and finance committee did receive, uh, a nice present, nice package from the finance director that, and I'm sure that if anybody wants it, can get it through the town manager. It's, it spells out and gives us accurate, um, balances in all of our, um, capital accounts and so forth that we're putting this month in, this money into. And it's, it's, it's great to see that we have a very healthy reserves on hand if, if something is needed.
Thank you. Could we, uh, get that distributed to all of the counselors? Great. Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Gallagher. Okay, uh, let's see. So I would entertain a motion, uh, to approve.
So moved.
Second.
A motion, a second. Any additional discussion? Seeing none, we can move to a voice vote. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed say nay. The motion passes. Okay. Um, moving on to item M, uh, old business, we have none. Item N, new business. Uh, we have order O F Y 24013, prior fiscal year bill. I'll refer to the town manager to introduce.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, very rarely, uh, do, do we have a prior fiscal year bill, uh, because we are very, um, conscious of, of notifying our vendors that we need their invoices prior to, uh, the change in fiscal year. However, uh, in this case, we did receive, uh, very late, in fact, I think we received it in October, uh, a bill that was for work, uh, that was commissioned in June of last fiscal year. So it's in the amount of $366.32 and it requires, uh, a nine-tenths vote of the town council. Uh, so obviously there are only nine of you and not 10. So it requires a unanimous vote in order for us to pay this. Um, and I would recommend sending it to budget and finance and, and finance committee.
Okay. Do we have any questions for the town manager?
We do. Mr. President, through you to the town manager. What happens if we don't, if we don't pay it?
Um, well, then the vendor, if they chose to go to small claims court for $366.32, they could get a small claims judgment and then we would have to pay.
The likelihood of that happening is?
Oh, I don't prognosticate anything.
Your town attorney then has to spend a whole day in small claims court. So can you pay the 300 bucks?
From what I hear, the town attorney loves to spend all day.
Oh, absolutely. Yep.
Thanks. Do we have any additional questions? Okay, uh, I would entertain a motion to refer to budget and finance and finance.
Second.
Give a motion a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed say nay. Motion passes. Nine tenths. All right. The next item we have is order O F Y 24014, Acceptance of Department of Energy Resource Green Communities Competitive Grant. Uh, I will defer to the town manager to introduce this.
Thank you, Mr. President. This, uh, is a, uh, annual green communities grant in the amount of, uh, 100, excuse me, $113,815. Uh, it will fund, among other things, it'll fund, uh, training, uh, for building operator, uh, or building operators, our systems operator. Uh, it'll fund weatherization in the library and the police station and whether it's weatherization and also insulation in the senior center, uh, building as well. So again, I'd encourage you to forward to finance committee and budget and finance.
Uh, do we have any questions for the town manager? Okay. Um, a question, if we wanted to extend this to also refer to the energy committee. Um, we can do that all three with a single motion, correct? Just mechanically? Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, so, so long as you think you're going to get the votes, because what could happen is they don't want to vote to one or the other and then you may have to.
Yeah. So we'll, we'll, maybe we'll split them up. So, um, first I would entertain a motion to refer to budget and finance and finance committee.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Although, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Motion passes. I would also, uh, entertain a motion to refer to the energy committee.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any additional discussion? I would just add, I do think it's good to get energy, uh, committee's opinion on this, uh, given the matter. Um, so any additional discussion? Uh, we can move to a voice vote. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed say nay. Motion passes. Thank you. Um, moving on to item O, uh, citizen comment. We have a citizen. Yes, citizen.
I'm at the front of the line. Thank you.
Yeah.
Um, Cartland, Austin Street, thank you for referring it to the energy committee. We will take it up. Um, I don't anticipate any issues, but having the details, I will remind the town manager, the council and anybody else who's listening, if we don't complete, if this is funded and accepted, if we don't complete the work before the February 2024 competitive round, we are ineligible to compete again until it's completed. So there is a level of urgency in my mind to do this work, especially one, the training. And two, I don't know what the administrative support involves. I'm hoping it's not supplantation. Thank you. Two, the fire station, I had the privilege of sitting in on their last, um, fire station, uh, building committee. It's phenomenal what they've done. They've taken and looked at how you heat the bay. Think about a big bay with doors that open wide. They've done a lot of work to minimize the energy expenditure and maximize the dealing to include the way the doors open. They've baked the building alternative energy ready, solar ready. They've increased the, the weight carrying capacity of the roofs. They've done a lot of really good stuff that there's a lot of details that I've done very well. So I'm thanking them very much. As to the review of the town manager, it's not clear to me whether or not the review will include the 360 staff that report to him, two boards, committees and commissions who work with him, and three other elected officials. I think that's a complete review and I'm just going to ask you to please consider that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, seeing no one else from the public, uh, we can close item O and move on to council, uh, counselor comments. Uh, we'll start with, uh, following the order on my sheet, Counselor McKinnon.
Thank you. So just three things real quick. Um, I want to congratulate my friend over in West Bridgewater, Mike Perez. He just won on selectmen by five votes, which is pretty cool. My friend showed up, I might have beat you by the 17 votes. That's a different story. Second off, people behind the cameras up there, B T V, they need some volunteers. If you have children in high school or in college, they can get credits for volunteering through them. I've been doing it for the last two, three weeks. I've done the football games, volleyball. It's fun. Get fed. Jeff and the team are great people. Then third off, going to talk about cash here, cash strong. I've been wearing the shirt past few times. I mean, we all drive around. It's pretty, pretty crazy seeing all the signs everywhere, all the town property. This neighbor has one, this one does, skip one, three more, you know, it's, it's good to see the town come together for the Silva family. I mean, they're one of the biggest families in town. They've been here forever. May not be considered a townie if you don't know a Silva, you know, but besides that, there's been a lot going on. Krispies did a fundraiser for them, which was really good. I mean, they bought 45 shirts for all the workers and I think they might be selling some there. Emma's has something in plan, but we're waiting on someone who might have one championship ring, two championship ring, or three championship rings. Who knows? I mean, that's every sport. So who knows what I'm talking about, but hopefully there'll be a good event at Ron Emma's with, uh, a little celebrity appearance. But the one event that is coming up is at the Veterans Club. I got to look at my phone so I don't say anything wrong. It's November 17th from 7:00 PM to 11:00 PM. There's food, a DJ, a cash bar, raffles, 50/50 and a silent auction. Tickets $25 now. If you email bookie, B O O K I E, 0301@gmail.com or Kim Silva, K I M S I L V A at Comcast.net for tickets, uh, pre-ordering tickets. If not, the $30 at the door. And that's at the Veterans Club at 85 Cottage Street on November 17th. And, uh, it's really about it for me. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Counselor McKinnon. Uh, next we have Counselor George.
Oh, thank you. Um, so I know it was brought up earlier in regards to, um, public comment and I know that, you know, our, our town attorney, i- in a way rightfully so, and I don't know if I'd agree a hundred percent in regards to interaction with questions and things of that nature. Um, I think personally, for me, if any, and I tried to convey this when I was council president, any committee that wants to come in front of us should feel empowered to ask, to be in front of us during our discussion period. That gives not only the public advanced notice that they'll be here for a discussion, but I also think it gives us a little bit of time to be able to maybe look up exactly what's going to be discussed. I'm not very good at answering a lot of questions that come up on the spot. I may not know the answer and I may not be a hundred percent accurate. And I think the last thing any of us wants to do is kind of fire off a response to find out later that it wasn't accurate, not to say that anyone is, is doing it on purpose. So, uh, it, it's a little bit of time. It's not a lot of time, but you know, I think we, if, if we have any committees out there that, you know, want to get in front of us to talk about something, I would like to see them approach the council president, be put on an agenda, give us an idea of what's being discussed, give us the opportunity to do a little bit of preparation and then have a full discussion. Um, uh, I think it would benefit us. I think it would benefit the committee. I think it would benefit the public. So, um, that would be my only input for tonight. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Counselor George. Uh, Counselor Gallagher?
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, I want to congratulate, um, Mike McDermott on his retirement on the fire department. Um, I, I have known him since I started getting involved with the town back in 1995. And he had already been on the force for seven years at that time. So I've. And he had already been on the force for seven years at that time. So I've known him for most of his career uh, on the fire department, have seen him climb through the ranks and, uh, and, and his career as chief. So I wish him well in his retirement. Also congratulate, um, John Slats in becoming the acting fire chief. I think, uh, that decision was a very good decision. Again, he has been on the fire department pretty much as long as I have been involved in town government here. So it's great to see a promotion from within and, uh, one of our own, uh, becoming acting fire chief. And see where it goes next, next year. Um, as far as, um, the citizens' comments and interaction with the council, I don't think, I don't think that there's anyone on the council that does not want to engage a citizen or whatever in any certain topic or anything. Um, I think if we were to start to do that at a, at a council meeting, I think all of us will have an opinion and we go back and forth and we'd be here for hours. It's hard to do, to do, to do that, uh, back and forth, uh, at citizens' comments. But I do think that citizens' comments are certainly needed and certainly welcomed. Um, it's good for us to take in that feedback and then, um, you know, get back to that individual later on if, if we can. Having said that, you know, there, I'm, I'm certainly open myself up to engaging the public as many times as I can. And I will, once again, this Saturday, if you want to come to Bridgewater Bagel and Coffee, I'll be sitting there having a coffee with the councillor with whoever wants to show up. I'll be happy to, uh, talk to them about anything that's going on in the town regarding the, um, vision to reality regarding free cash, regarding running for office next spring or whatever they want to talk about. I'll, I'll be there, uh, if you care to join me. And also I want to, hopefully everyone will have a safe, uh, Halloween next Tuesday night. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, councillor Chase?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. I, um, would just remind everyone that, um, uh, Veterans Day is, uh, fast approaching. And, uh, I think all the council members were recently reminded of the, some of our recurring, uh, commemorations, uh, that take place, uh, this month. And, um, uh, one of which, of course, being that the tri-town Veterans Day Parade. Uh, I'm sure that a good many of us, uh, on the council will be present for that event. And, uh, I, I'd also just point out that the, um, uh, the senior center annually has hosted a, uh, a terrific event for Veterans Day. Uh, one that, uh, I would urge you to, uh, uh, become familiar with if you haven't already experienced it, but it's a very, very popular event. I've attended it for a couple of years now and, uh, uh, it's something that you should simply, uh, make known your intention to appear in advance, uh, to the staff of the senior center. But, uh, uh, it's very well attended and a very popular event. And, uh, I commend them for their ability to host that event, uh, each year. And that is all.
Great. Thank you, councillor Chase. Uh, councillor Murphy?
Nothing time, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Dr. Perry?
Uh, thank you. Uh, I too want to echo the sentiments that, uh, councillor Gallagher mentioned. I certainly want to congratulate Chief McDermott on a, a long and, uh, and fruitful career. Uh, thank him very much for his service and the time spent as, uh, for his leadership. As fire chief of the department and certainly again congratulating, uh, John Schlats for becoming the active fire chief at this point. I'm, uh, uh, been, uh, classmate of John's and, uh, teammate of him over the years in football and know he has, uh, excellent leadership skills and, uh, he'll do a fine job. And I wish him much luck. Um, and just to echo what councillor Chase said, I believe this is, uh, event is in East Bridgewater. Uh, so, uh, just, uh, keep an eye out for that. And then, uh, finally, I just want to mention to the public that the Lions Club will be having a fundraising, uh, Halloween dance this Friday coming up at seven o'clock at the Vets Club. Tickets are still available. So if anyone wants to, uh, participate and, uh, have a good time, uh, it'll be a costume contest. So prizes will be given and, uh, all the, uh, you know, proceeds, uh, go to Lions Club charities. So if you can make it, come on down this Friday, seven o'clock at the Vets Club. That's all I got. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Dr. Perry. Uh, councillor Lindy?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I just want to thank two of my fellow councillors for their work on different things. Fred Chase on the ordinance dealing with the, um, council stipends and councillor George on the town manager review. I think that's a great timeframe that's been put forward. Um, I would like to ask if possible, if we have presentations that get presented, um, like the one that was presented tonight, which was presented in December when I wasn't on the council. If we could have access to those in advance, unless there's something con- con- controversial or confidential in it. Couple of events coming up. The town clerk is doing a basically kind of run for office educational thing on November fourth from I think it's ten to twelve to encourage people to run for office. I think that's a great effort. And also, just like Fourth of July, if we want lights in the center of the common, there's fundraising going on and different events that are going to be going on for Winter Wonderful. I believe there's an event on November eleventh on Veterans Day that night. I don't know the details of the times, but they're trying to do a fundraiser because they have to come up with money and it's not a matter. It's the labor that goes into putting the lights up that stay up for the whole season. So if we don't get, if the money isn't received, there are no lights. Um, and, um, I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Lindy. Uh, councillor Robinson?
Thank you. Um, I'm going to echo just briefly to, um, congratulating Chief McDermott on retiring and fracturing teeth. Um, I'm probably going to butcher the last name Schlats for stepping up and coming in. Um, I'm sure it's a little bit bittersweet too for Chief McDermott to, to miss out on the, the new fire station project. But, um, anyway, so I'm excited for, for the whole crew and, and the litany around that. And then thank you for mentioning the Veterans Day Parade. Um, that will be a great thing coming up. Um, and then I'm just going to do my own little community organization pitch and remind everyone that Easter Seals in the Bridge Center has a trunk or treat um, on the twenty-seventh from four thirty to six thirty. And, um, and I know that I had sent out a communication encouraging people to share their Facebook and their socials, um, to just raise some more awareness because they really can serve so many communities, um, not only just Bridgewater, but super highway accessible. So, um, the more we could help increase their reach, the better off for everyone. So that's it. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, councillor Robinson. Uh, bring us home. Uh, would also like to congratulate Chief McDermott, um, on a, a long career and, uh, for his support of Bridgewater and all the different ways we heard about tonight, not just through the fire department, but also through his volunteerism. It was funny after, or maybe not funny, but after it was announced that he was retiring, um, someone that's familiar with the town said, I, I hope the next one in line is John. Uh, and I'm excited to hear that, uh, that it was. So congratulations to both of them. I also maybe want to build on what councillor George said. Uh, we certainly do welcome, uh, items on the agenda from committees. And I would also say members of the public, if there's a topic that you would like to hear us talk about, I can't guarantee that it can make it to the agenda, but we would certainly love to hear it and, um, and, uh, discuss the possibility of putting that on one of the agendas. The way that our agendas are built, uh, typically they're finalized the Monday before them, or sorry, the Wednesday before the meeting. So today's agenda was finalized, you know, sort of in draft form last Wednesday. And that's so that we can post it according to open meeting law. Um, so if you would like to get on the agenda, just make sure, you know, kind of look at the calendar, make sure you get us the request, um, by that Wednesday. Uh, and if we can't get it in that one because of, you know, maybe other topics that are taking up the agenda, we will consider it for other, a, a future one. Uh, but certainly encourage it and that's, I don't, don't wait for an invite. Uh, feel free to, to, to ask for time on the agenda. I did want to also call out, I think some of you have seen an app called See Click Fix. Um, I have started to play around with it as well. Uh, if you have an issue in town, uh, like a pothole or a few of, uh, a few other issues, um, you can through that app sort of, uh, share that issue with the town. You can also see issues that other people have shared and you can monitor progress and resolution of those issues. Uh, some of the data is still being updated. Um, so you might see some older things that, you know, are sort of in the system before the, we started to get traction with it, but this is on the website as well. You can download it. Again, it's called See Click Fix. Uh, it's a pretty quick way, uh, to let the town know, uh, about an issue that, uh, that you have. Looking at my list here. Uh, I think that's it. We can move on to item Q, executive session. We have none tonight and item R adjournment. I would welcome.
So moved second.
We have a motion a second. All those. Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Um, we are adjourned.